15th, 2025 meeting of the Manchester Planning and Zoning Commission will now come to order. First item on the agenda is a review and approval of the June 17th meeting minutes. Everyone should have a copy of the minutes in front of them. Can you take a minute to review them, see if they are correct, or if any changes needed to be made?
I'll make a question.
We have a motion to approve the June 17th meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next.
Good evening.
Michelle, how are you?
Good. I don't have much report. We've had no difference from the June meeting as far as the any statuses on any of the projects. The only thing that we are currently working on, and we've talked about it before, is the revisions to 250.
Right.
And we're gonna kind of hold off on those since now with the definition change, I'll have to edit that up again.
Okay.
Edit it one final time, send it out, and we'll talk in August.
Okay, very good. Matt, how are you this evening?
I'm good. How is you guys this evening?
We're doing very well, thank you.
Okay, so my report is the wastewater treatment plant, big project that's going on in town. We are still between 90 and 100% design. CDM Smith is is working with MDE to get some concerns answered. And we're getting some review comments back from the county for stormwater management and different departments over there. So that's where that project stands. The PFOS project, we're hoping to get MDE approval to start design of that new plant by the end of the month. So there were also three ordinances introduced at the town council meeting. 267, which I believe you have in front of you, which was referred over, was the definition change. 268 condenses some of the other chapters into one, which would be animals disorderly houses, nuisances, noises, and property maintenance. And then 269 deals with relocation of water meters from inside of the house to vaults outside. So that is my town administrator report.
Okay. How are the town wells doing in light of all this recent rain? I know it takes a while to reach the aquifer, but just.
They are doing very well. We're always cautious, though, but they're doing well.
Good. Okay, any questions for Matt? Okay, thank you, Matt. Chris is not here tonight. Michelle, do you have any report for council or Dale? Oh, he's not council anymore. I'm sorry. It's hard used to that.
No, our town administrator covered it.
Okay, very good. Andrew, how are you this evening?
Well, and you?
We're doing well, thank you.
Just a couple brief updates. Number one, for water and sewer, the spring 2025 amendment will be going to the Board of County Commissioners on July 31st for a public hearing. For text amendments, they, the Board of County Commissioners, they are hearing text amendments on the employment campus district, adequate public facilities, and solar development requirements. For the master plan, as you know, we have three workgroups, agriculture, economy, and housing. Right now, we are past the midway point for those three workgroups. And those workgroups are going to provide recommendations to the Planning and Zoning Commission, who ultimately will be providing recommendations, recommending the plan, the master plan, to the Board of County Commissioners. And that is all I have. Yes, sir.
When are they thinking, final date to pull each of the workgroups to pull their recommendations?
The work, so right now, we have, this, not this week, next week, we'll be meeting six of seven. And then in two weeks, we'll be meeting seven of seven. So a month, a month and a half.
So by the end of the summer, this is all going to be wrapped up?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Hopefully.
Yeah. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Water Resources Element, the Manchester portion. It was presented to us in July, and there were some questions by the board relative to the numbers that the county had generated versus our numbers that the town had generated. So we requested more information from the county, and I see we have Ms. Guinea here this evening.
Yes.
How are you?
I'm good, thank you. And unfortunately, I am not going to be so short and sweet. Short, but not short in length of the. But what I, I wanted to start over for you because it really, it really wasn't fair for Michelle to have to try to present all this information to you because it's a lot of technical information and sort of complicated and a lot to it. So I wanted to start over and actually give you the presentation that we had put together to do for each of the municipal planning commissions. It's not short, but I will try to be quick about it.
Okay.
And of course, I'd say I can provide you with the PowerPoint, but most of this information is in the there's another summary that, Michelle, did they get the bigger summary last month?
Yes.
Yes. Most of this information is actually in there. It's just I'm hoping to explain a little bit of it through the presentation.
Thank you.
And then I will also get to the numbers for Manchester. So I know maybe Mr. DiMario may have been here when we did the 2010. Were you mayor at the time? So I was the one who led that effort as well. So the, but if you haven't, weren't part of it before, the Water Resources Element is a state-required element of the comprehensive plan. And it's essentially meant to make sure that we're looking at when you're doing your comprehensive plans, that whatever you have planned for growth reflects the water, wastewater, stormwater, water resources in general, whatever opportunities or restraints that there may be on those resources to the planned growth. And then, of course, you want that addressed in your plan. So the connection then for you is we're going to be looking, it looks at public drinking water availability, wastewater treatment capacity, and then as far as stormwater goes, like the federal and state requirements for stormwater and water quality. And then you're going to pull together plan recommendations to implement what needs to be done to address the needs. But all of these things, you know, for in terms of availability and capacity, impact what you can plan for your future growth. So ultimately, the planning commission is going, you know, it's your responsibility to approve something that you want to recommend to your legislative body, who will then, you know, ultimately would be responsible to adopt it if that's what they do. So it, a lot has changed since 2010. In addition to the things that I already mentioned, in 2022, the state came out with new guidance that added climate change that needs to be addressed with this plan, or the impacts of climate change on water resources, not all aspects of climate change. And then also, they want you to look at planned growth and impacts on water resources through an equity lens. So we've done that just basically through some recommendations that are in there. But we also have added another component, which was emerging contaminants. As Matt mentioned earlier, you know, several of the towns are dealing with PFOS, and that's not the only emerging contaminant that's an issue. So we wanted to make sure we addressed, and we're on top of that in terms of the action items that go into the plan as well. But since then, we've also had a lot of changes in state and federal laws, policies, and regulations. And in 2010, we had the same three components, the water, wastewater, and it was called non-point source instead of stormwater. But we essentially had to scrap the entire stormwater section and start over because that's how much has changed. So now this, the information for this plan uses MDE methodology. They say, here's the methodology that we want you to use in order to come up with, you know, how much capacity you have. So that's what was used in here. And then, of course, it's also important to understand, we've got nine jurisdictions all working together on the plan. And even if it was just one, we had to pick a point in time that the data was going to be based on, or we'd never be done, right? So when we started this and when we hired a consultant, it was 2023. So we picked the 2023 water and sewer service areas in the water and sewer master plan. And the zoning that was in place when we did, you know, I'm sure you've heard of the buildable land inventory, and it's just kind of how we consistently can estimate things. Planning tool never meant to be exact, but that's how we can consistently use that tool across the board. And 2022 zoning is what was used when they did the 2023 estimates. So that's where that information, like that's the time that it was based on. And anything that, like, there may be changes that have happened since then. For example, Union Bridge adopted a new comprehensive plan since then. So we added recommendations in their section to say, all right, you know, go back and look at these numbers and, you know, see if the amendments that you made require changes to these, like, just kind of looking at it that way. So that rather than going back and trying to have, everybody has different numbers because we updated numbers in one place and not another, we just added recommendations to address this. And then the area that we're looking at is all of the water and sewer service areas. So the water and sewer service areas are, from MDE, are the existing, which is, you know, either now or imminent to be served, or could be served right now. Priority service area, which is zero to six years typically in the water and sewer plan, and then future, which is seven to 10. Carroll County has added the long-range service area, so it's not one that's required by MDE. But, you know, we have that in our water and sewer plan because we want to look further ahead. And we want to make sure we're planning, you know, a little bit more into the future and what we're going to need when we're. So that's very useful for this purpose because it does give us the ability to base our estimates on a longer-range look in terms of being able to serve the development at buildout of all of those areas. So when you look at the plan document, we have all the background information. But the, then there's a whole section of countywide strategies. And through the Water Resource Coordination Council, we all work together to identify action items that everybody could do. And then we also have the individual sections that are specific to your municipal systems. So, but they all have the same format. So we look at what's already in place because MDE is going to look at that. If we don't include that, MDE could look at the plan and think, oh, well, they should be doing this. Well, look, if we add what we're already doing, we can show we're already doing it. And of course, there's, there's stuff that's ongoing. And then we divided the action items into short term and long term. So short term's like five to 10 years, long term would be probably more like longer than 10 years. So let's get into this. Okay, drinking water supply. So we had, we hired a consultant in 2010 to develop the supporting technical information for the plan back then. And this time, we hired a consultant to update that information. So one of the things that they did was they looked at, and because you're on a public system, this maybe isn't as relevant to you, but it looked at countywide, you know, how much groundwater is there and how much surface water is there to even serve those people on septic outside of the municipalities. But then we followed the MDE methodology to come up with the estimate, well, we used our demand using BLI. And then to estimate the capacity, use their, their methodology. So when your water or your wastewater system gets to a certain percent capacity, MDE requires you to develop what they call the Water Supply Capacity Management Plan or a Wastewater Capacity Management Plan. And the methodology to develop those plans is the same methodology that we had to use for this. And there are factors in there that aren't necessarily factors that are used in the water and sewer plan. So we'll address that. When it comes to water, using their methodology, you can see Freedom, you know, they're, they're good to go because they draw from Liberty Reservoir. But then you can see the other towns that are in yellow all came out still needing some additional capacity in order to meet the buildout at the 2023 water service area. However, the reason these are yellow are because the limitations that make it yellow are a little easier to overcome than, say, when you get to New Windsor and Union Bridge, where you're talking plant, wastewater treatment plant expansions are a whole new plant. So a lot of the additional need for capacity for yours and others in the yellow could come from just finding new sources or increasing your appropriations. Then you get to this table. So we call this our traffic late table. And for Manchester, if you look at the number, it comes out, and this, I mean, everybody but Freedom is in this situation where you didn't think you would be. But the reason it comes out negative is because MDE assumes that, you know, one of your limiting factors, say, say you had a bunch of wells that, because Manchester, Hampstead, you know, are pretty much water sources, your wells, right? They would assume your largest well is out of service. And then add a drought demand of 10% on top of it, which is, well, we don't do that for the water and sewer plant. Those are the things. So in your case, the pump capacity was the number that, based on their methodology. If your pump capacity is four, with nine different systems, like 400 something like that. You're appropriated for 581, but if your pump can't pump more than, I'm just making this number up, say 427,000, that's still your limitation. So in MDE's mind, they're trying to get everybody where you have some redundant capacity, or if you have something that's out of service, you still have enough capacity to serve your demand. And that's why everybody's coming out negative because they are very conservative on how they're coming up with their numbers. So in your case, building, you know, increasing your pump capacity could take care of this, and finding additional water sources, you've already got the appropriation for it. But this, this is just based on MDE's numbers. So like I said, this is different than how we do the water and sewer master plan. The water and sewer master plan, I mean, this is much more conservative. And so I know that concern, and I'm actually very thankful that you came up with the concern for the certifying consistency for the water and sewer master plan because it's something that we had thought of, and we had already put in a recommendation that we need to work, you know, the county and the municipalities through the Water Resource Coordination Council, need to work with MDE to try to get these methodologies to match between the WRE and the Water and Sewer Plan Regulations. And it was perfect that you, because not only did it give me an opportunity to think about how you would do the consistency so I could add something, but it also helps to emphasize to MDE why this is a problem and, and help support that we have this as a recommendation in the plan. So if you looked at your numbers again for water, and you just looked at how they, how you do it for the water and sewer master plan, the first column there is takes your permit, so your permitted amount for water, and then take out your demand, and that's how much, and then it shows, yes, you do have water available. And, but that, that one includes the long range. If you took, which, like I said, MDE doesn't really recognize that, that's something we do in our plan. If you took long range out of the demand, it's, it's even better at 159.9. So when you're looking at the water and sewer master plan, this is how you would look at it to make sure it's consistent. And so I gave you a couple things. One is I updated the summary specifically for Manchester that you got last time and added these numbers to it for water and wastewater. But you also have your section of the draft document there. And you'll see I added text for both water and wastewater that explains, you know, these methods are different for purposes of certifying for consistency, you know, here's how you're going to look at it. And that text is in pink in the plan document there. So you can see what I added to try to address that situation. But then, so these are the numbers that you would actually use if you were trying to certify consistency, at least based on the 2023 service areas. Does that help explain why they're different? We don't, we don't have the, you drop out your.
You drop out your highest yielding.
Right, and you don't have the, to add 10% drought. Yeah. Right. So, I mean, everybody kind of looks this way. So, you know, adding this text that I added, and again, thank you, I think will help to explain that to people a little better and, and like I said, emphasize to MDE that this is a problem. So, you know, we have the background, here's the situation we have. And then I told you, we have countywide strategies that everybody can do. And then we have the individual, which is specific to your municipal systems. All of the, everybody has the same strategies. It just might be the action items that we put under it that are different. And I also want to point out that, so, you know, basically, it's, you know, you're going to protect and sustain what you have and then look for new when you need it. And then for water, you have water conservation and emergency supply that you want to accommodate. And then we have, like, so there's individual specific action items, but then there's just options overall that everybody is able to look at in terms of supply alternatives. Say it's 50 years from now, and, you know, we know how long the reservoirs have been on the books. But we're not taking them off. It may never happen, but, but it's a possible option. And it shows to MDE that we can, you know, if there's enough money, we can actually develop enough water supply if we had to. So it's, and then we have surface water intake. For some of the municipalities, quarries, the quarry water is an option. Of course, everybody, you know, most of you have groundwater wells as an option, although it's getting more and more difficult to find wells. Interconnection with other systems, little less desirable than maybe it was in 2010. But, and now we have indirect potable reuse as, as an option as well. I'm sure you're probably familiar with Westminster's Pure Water, Water Reuse Project. So that, that's an option for anybody long-term, down the road. If, worst-case scenario, we need to really look at, you know, we're showing MDE here that we have options. So I pulled out a few of the key action items countywide. And then one thing I wanted to point out is the action items are not things you're required to do. These are just things that we could do to help address the strategies. They are not commitments. So there's a lot of things in here because we're showing MDE, we've, there's a lot of things we think we could do. You know, it's not likely you're going to get to be able to do all of them. So like I said, it's not a commitment, it's just these are things we could do. So, you know, some of the key action items for water supply countywide were diversify water supplies and provide, you know, redundant capacity and help to mitigate climate change. I mean, that kind of does both things since climate change could cause, you know, more severe droughts or flooding, either one. Investigate water reuse options if it gets to that point, like Westminster's doing. We should all have drought management plans if we don't already. And, and some of these things, some of the municipalities already have, but not everybody does. Identify emergency supplies and measures, and then even shared service agreements is an option. For Manchester, the short-term key things that I wanted to pull out were the PFOS treatment, which Matt mentioned. And you have centralized treatment of the wells in your action items as well for short-term, which is tied to the PFOS treatment. And then long-term, it's all those regional water supply options that I already went through. You know, any of those could be an option, not any, I mean, maybe not the quarries and, but, you know, the ones that are relevant are an option. So we have wastewater. Manchester's green, so I think we're good there. You, even using MDE's methodology, you have capacity for 2023 buildout demand. So, I mean, don't need to explain that too much. You've got over 65,000 gallons available still at, at buildout demand. And then, of course, yours, green gets, green gets greener, right? So same with water for countywide strategies and, and for the individual strategies, like I said, they're the same. You're going to sustain what you have, and you're going to develop new when you need it. So a lot of the, just about everybody, you know, if you're looking at overall options, you're going to look at reducing INI, your inflow and infiltration. Because if you can get the water out of your system that doesn't belong there, it's not flowing through the plant and gives you more capacity for what you do want to flow through the plant. So a lot of the systems, you know, if you invest, and it's probably one of the cheaper ways to get capacity. I'm not saying it's cheap, but compared to other options, yeah. It, you know, that would, that's a great way for everybody. And I know Manchester already has a program to be looking at that. So it's more like just keep continuing, doing that and reducing. Water reuse, there's the indirect potable like Westminster's doing, but you, you're an example of how water reuse, you know, with your spray irrigation. You're the only municipality in county that's doing that, but that is another example of water reuse. And then for some of the municipalities, they're going to need to look at expanding or developing a new wastewater treatment plan. So key action items countywide are to help to coordinate on these INI reductions. And maybe we can save money by sharing equipment and contractors. There are a few municipalities, all of the major plants have or, or in the process of upgrading to E and R for their wastewater treatment. But some of the minor plants that are under 500,000 still need to be upgraded. They weren't required to be upgraded. But doing that might also help with their treatment and capacity if they do that at the same time. You can explore zero discharge and water reuse opportunities with that as well. And most of the, well, all of the plants have either a cap or a goal for nutrients, for nitrogen and phosphorus. Some of them will be, it's not an issue for you, but some of them will be hitting that cap before they get to build out. So this is something they might consider in order to address that issue. And then, of course, we all need to look at how we're going to fund all this stuff because it always comes down to money. And then for Manchester in particular, you know, complete your, your E and R upgrade and your INI improvements. Continue to do that, and that's kind of the key things for Manchester. Stormwater is actually super easy for us because while you should be considering stormwater in terms of its impacts to water quality through the land use decisions you make, it's not really going to be something that impacts, like, you can't do planned growth because of it. We have regulations in place that address stormwater through new development. And then we have our MPDES MS4 stormwater permit, for which the county municipalities are joint permittees on, that addresses stuff that already is existing and restoring all our impervious acreage. And, and that's a federal requirement. We have to do it, as you know, we have to invest a lot of money in that. And so that's, that's already being done. So what we were able to do is basically just reference, like, our annual reports and our stormwater permit and our TMDL. That's Total Maximum Daily Load, if you don't know what that, if you're not familiar with that. It's like the maximum amount of pollutant that the water in the bay can assimilate and still meet water quality standards. So we have a TMDL implementation plan that's required by a permit, and that helps to say what we're going to do to address the TMDLs and achieve them and how and when, and, and, you know, it talks about funding. So we're already doing everything they need to know through those efforts. So we're just referencing them in this plan. No need to reinvent the wheel, right? No need to reinvent the wheel, right? So, the biggest strategy countywide is to protect and restore, you know, our water quality and, and make progress towards those TMDLs, because the state's just going to keep coming back and coming back. So, and then, the next three are countywide strategies, but they're not in the individual, because we thought we covered everything under the countywide without having to repeat it. So, you know, enhance our stormwater management programs, identify land use patterns and changes through our plans that would help address the pollutant load, and then also try to reduce flood, flooding impacts, so. So countywide, we have amended stormwater code to incorporate the new state requirements once adopted. So, the, the state adopted legislation, the General Assembly adopted legislation last year, a year before, that is going to require us to update our stormwater regulations, and it, we're going to have to do more stormwater treatment than we're already doing. And they're trying to address flooding in it as well. So, once, the last we're, we're hearing, they're hoping to have draft regulations out by the end of the summer. This is MDE. So we'll see what, what's in it at that point. But we're going to all need to adopt amendments to that code. And then, they're also going to be requiring us to do watershed-specific flood management plans. Hopefully, that winds up just being the watersheds that have identified flooding issues, and not every one of them, not sure yet. But since these are all requirements, that's why they're listed in here. Continue supporting the AgPres program, because that helps to keep our impervious cover down. And we, our agriculture has a lot of best practices in place to try to reduce their nutrients, too. We have a floodplain manager in the county who has gotten us a very good rating with the community rating system with FEMA. And the higher level we achieve, the less the flood insurance is for our residents. So, we'll keep working to achieve a higher and higher level of that. And then, wherever we can identify some of these practices that also help other things, like, we're going to address stormwater, but that also helps flooding. Or it might also maybe find something that helps water supply and whatever. That's always, then you're getting more for your money if you can find co-benefits. And then, of course, any funding opportunities, they're becoming less and less. So anything we find, we got to take advantage of. For, like I said, for Manchester specifically, we don't have anything, because we felt like everything for all the municipalities and were addressed through the countywide and through our permit efforts, since we're joint permittees and have a memorandum of agreement. So then there's climate change. So, for Carroll County, what climate change is looking like is warmer temperatures, increased extreme precipitation events, which I think we're all getting very familiar with that in the last couple of years, increased flooding, increased water quality issues, and increased drought potential. So, you got more severe droughts, at the same time you've got more flooding. So, there were action items integrated through this. We didn't make a section just for climate change, because a lot of the things that you do can address water and wastewater and storm, or whatever. So we just integrated them throughout those strategies and action items, rather than making it its own section. So, but countywide, again, same thing that you saw before for stormwater. Like I said, it's the same thing you're doing for stormwater, you're doing for this. So it's the same exact action items. Then there's emerging contaminants. So we talked about PFOS, you got other microplastics. Pharmaceuticals and personal care products have been something that have been talked about for a while, but nothing's, nothing's come about from it yet in terms of federal standards. But road salt has been very actively discussed in the past several years, and now lithium is beginning to be discussed. So these are all things that, imagine down the road, we're going to need to be addressing. So, basically, countywide, we're just going to look, you know, keep looking at what the impacts are and trying to stay ahead of it. But there's not a lot to go on until we know what the standards are going to be. If we're going to be medium, you know, just like with PFOS, until EPA set the maximum, the MCL for PFOS at .4 trillion, parts per trillion, whatever, crazy. We didn't, we didn't know what you need to do, because you don't know how significant it's going to be. So, for emerging contaminants, we'll just keep testing and monitoring. We develop PFOS mitigation plans and, which would include treatment for public water, drinking water systems where needed, salt management plans, and that's a requirement in our stormwater permit, so we're all doing that already. In fact, yours was probably done by the end of June, so you're good. Lead and copper waterline inventory replacement, you've probably heard about that as well. EPA had the lead and copper inventory that you had to do, and now then, and then follow that up with replacing lead pipes and whatnot. So, that's another thing that has to be done and has to be paid for. Continue monitoring for lithium, and we do anticipate drinking water standards for that. So, if we know what, you know, we can get trends if we're already monitoring it. And then, of course, at some point, we're going to have to allocate funding for these things. So for your comprehensive plan, I kind of mentioned this already, again, you just, you really need to just, this ties to the compreh, the rest of your comprehensive plan, because it affects how much you can plan to do, because everything needs, you know, water and sewer. So, if you, you need to have enough in order to accommodate what you're planning. And, you know, you need to look at water and wastewater together, because particularly for some of the other municipalities, they, they can get more water, but their plant can't treat more water, their wastewater treat. So, your wastewater treatment plant has to be looked at with your water. And then, really, how are we going to fund, fund these and overcome the limitations? So the process here is, we're going through this with all the municipalities first. And, you know, if you, and doing through, like, the revision that I already provided you, any kind of feedback that I'm getting like that, I'll be making those revisions. And then, we will go to the County Planning Commission. So, just today, I started giving them little bites of all this background while the municipalities are all looking. So, when you, when all the municipalities are done looking at it and have said, yes, we're ready to send it out for 60-day review, then the county will start discussing it, and I'll be able to say, here's the feedback from all the municipalities. And then I realize that maybe they might have some changes to action items or something, or something like this, after you do approve it for 60-day review. But what I'll do is I'll compile those, and I'll just provide them to all the planning commission members, so you know what those were. Again, it's just, the 60-day review, of course, is the state agencies adjoining jurisdictions. And we also put it out for the public at that time as well. And we'll hold a public information meeting during that 60-day review. At the end of the 60-day review period, when we've gotten all the comments back from the state, then we'll hold a public hearing. And, good thing you're sitting down, but this can be done. It's going to be a joint public hearing of all nine planning commissions. And we did this for 2010, so I know it can be done. And now we have the advantage of being able to do hybrid. So, since all you need to do for a hearing is to listen to people's comments, it's not like question and answer session, it should be fairly simple to be able, simple, to be able to do a joint public hearing like that, because anybody who can't physically be there could at least join virtually and, and hear the comments that are being shared. So after that, then we can look at the state comments, the public comments, and then anything that the County Planning Commission might have added or other planning commissions before we sent it out for review, and decide how to, you know, what if any changes we're going to make as a result of those other things. But since it's still a draft when it goes out for review, we'll still be making changes. That's why, hopefully, you're comfortable, just because it's a logistical thing. Hopefully, you're comfortable with sending it out for 60-day review, even if the county planning commission makes some changes, as long as I send you what those changes are. So, once you're comfortable with the changes that were made after the public hearing and the review, then you'll get to a point where you have a version that you will recommend to your council for adoption, and then they have to go through the process. And since the 2010, the, the state laws changed a little bit, now the council also has to hold a public hearing. So, the, I mean, they'll, they'll review it, they'll hold a public hearing, and revisions can be made without sending it back to the planning commission now. And, so they can approve it as-is, I mean, adopt it as-is. They could modify it without sending it back to the planning commission. They can remand it to the planning commission for changes, in which case you have to go through the whole process again of 60-day review and public hearing and all that, or they could just outright deny it. And then you just don't have a plan. But that, that is the process. So, I need direction from you next. Do you have questions on what I've given you about the process, about? This, this is kind of what I already told you about the 60-day review. I know I couldn't have explained it that well.
You did. And thank you very much for coming.
I guess the one question I have, and maybe this is a silly question, but because the water side shows us having a deficit, does that mean MDE has the power to come back on us and say, you need to do X, Y, and Z in order to comply with the numbers that were established using our methodology?
I, I think that what they'll do is, when you get to the point, I don't know if it's 80 or 85%, wastewater and wastewater, I don't know if they have the same percentages, but when you get to that percent of your capacity and you're required to do a capacity management plan anyway, they're going to address it with that. Not, I can't make a guarantee, but that's my thought of how they're going to address that, because really, this is just a plan. And plans aren't meant to be, you know, commitments and that kind of thing.
But that was what raised the concern with us at the last meeting, was we have this number in deficit when we know, using the county methodology and our in-town numbers, we know that we have capacity.
Right, right.
And we're in good shape there. So, we just, we were concerned that MDE was going to look at this thing and say, you know, Manchester needs to do a pump upgrade, because they don't have capacity for build-out when, when we reach a certain point, or they're going to need to find another municipal well to replace. And, again, as you said, that's a funding issue, and that's a problem.
They won't fund it.
And, and, we don't have the, you know, that's not going to be easy to find money to do that, especially trying to justify it when we know we have capacity.
I, I think, I really do think that it's going to come when you have to submit the capacity management plan. Because just because it's in here doesn't mean you're ever going to get to that point. But a capacity management plan, you've gotten to that point. And so then they're going to, you know, but, I mean, another thing I can do, too, is add some additional language that says that issues will be looked at when you get to the point where a capacity management plan is required. Just to emphasize that, you know, that's when you expect that you're going to have to really look at these issues. And when you're required to do it anyway, that they can make you do something at that point, if you want to continue with the growth or whatever that, that you're planning.
Well, Henry said it very eloquently, but, I, I mean, I saw this happen with the wastewater treatment plant. And we were giving them data, and giving them data points. And then they hit us, and we had to build a spray field. And so I hesitate that this is a setup, that we're giving them this data point of being in the hole for, for build-out, that something else isn't coming down the road. And that's, that's my concern. And that, I really feel like we should push back on that number, because it's completely different than, than what we, we are predicting up here. I mean, to take out a well, your highest-producing well, and throw that out, it doesn't make sense to me. Because it just, it, and, and from the data that's, that's up there, this is skewed towards anybody that uses a reservoir. If you're getting water from the ground, you're going to fail, because they're going to take out your largest well and, and, and not using the calculation. There must be a reason for that, and I don't trust that reason.
Understood, yeah.
You know, to the commissioners, to the council, we should really push back on that, because something's coming, something's coming down the road. And, and it's going to cost us money, and it will be an unfunded mandate.
Yeah, I always suspect everything is a setup, but-
I do, especially when, when it's a state.
But, yeah.
And we've lived through it, and we've spent millions of dollars up here because of that unfunded mandate. I'm just trying to give people heads up.
No, I understand. And, I'm not sure how you get around, like, this is how we were supposed to do it. Other than, we can add even more qualifiers to say, this isn't, you know, we can put in the numbers that I added on the back, the bottom of that summary. Say, if you're looking at it with the water and sewer plan, you know, how you do that, here's the numbers. And we can add that.
At a minimum, we should do, we need to do that.
We need to do that, at a minimum.
And, and I think it might not hurt to-
I don't have a solution.
Yeah, I know.
Unfortunately, we don't like the number.
The more maybe we can add, at least in text, like I said, if we say, you know, we, you know, all the systems expect that when they get to the 80 or 85% for the system, and they know they have to do a capacity management plan, that if growth continues at that point, then they know they'll have to address certain things. You know, like, if we put in there, sort of say, this is how we're planning it to go, then at least they see that it's not out of our minds, it's just that here's what our plan about.
Right, exactly.
Brenda, I have a question. So, since 2023, we have, we are in the process of remending our municipal growth area. So that takes down buildable inventory. And we also have had a development that has decided not to develop. So we lost 40 or 50 houses there. Is there any way to take into account where we are today, not where we were in '23?
Well, like I said, I don't, I don't, really don't want to change the numbers from that year, because everybody's based on that consistent year. But what I would say is, you're in a similar situation to Union Bridge, where they actually took stuff out of their growth area. So, my suggestion then would be that we add some recommendations to your action items to say to, you know, these numbers are going to change based on this, you know.
Yeah, or something that indicates- Something that indicates it subsequent to 2023, that we've had a reduction in the municipal growth area and a-
And these numbers could be less, so you might not even be negative if you re-look at it.
So it's noted in there.
Yeah, but rather than re-look at it, so this, to say, this is something that needs to be done because of this.
It would be an action item, that we, you know, remove some municipal growth area and development, which we have done. So by the time, if they ever came back and recalculated it, we probably are nowhere near that number.
So I can try to draft some language, because I want to think about that to make sure it, good. Not just off the top of my head.
No, understood.
But something that would-
Yeah, we had a very-
Be like that, and same with Union Bridge.
Unusual water and sewer master plan update, because things were incorrect in there, as far as what we had and what we didn't have. And we've had to remove a lot of things from the water, which might be in what they're considering buildable inventory. So I think we have a big difference from what we did in '23.
Right, so we should at least note that as an action item that we've undertaken.
Take notes.
All right, so we want to reflect that you are working on a comp plan update that might reduce and changes in the demand numbers because of changes to the buildable land inventory.
Right, so the comp plan update will be reducing.
Right.
Okay. Okay.
And that was done both for water and sewer?
And for sewer, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I will draft up some potential action items that would address that. And then I'll send it back to you to share.
Right, and if you could incorporate the numbers that we discussed earlier, that would be helpful as well. We're not trying to hold you up, but we just, as Chris said, you know, we just don't want to get stuck in the situation where we just sign off on something and then MDE turns around in 12 months and says, well, because you said this was this, you need to do this. And, you know, we know what our actual numbers are. And so we, we, we want to make sure it's reflected at least somewhere in that document.
Right, well, see, the fact that you're raising the issue and we can come up with ways to address it now means when the next towns that I go to will already have a solution.
There you go.
Any other questions for Ms. Denny? Well, we appreciate you coming down and spending time with us this evening and going over everything. And I guess you'll get the revised documents over to Michelle once she makes some changes to it. And then I guess she'll distribute them to us.
Yeah, I'll add it to the draft section, your section there. I'll add it to that.
Okay.
And then resend that and Michelle can share it with you then.
Great.
As far as the County Planning Commission, like I said, we, we just started today with the first bite. They got the introduction and the process. So they haven't even gotten to water and wastewater. That's not until August. So they'll be, I think it's October when we start talking about strategies and action items with them.
So we have a little bit of time.
You have some time.
Okay.
And I, you know, for the most part, I have your, I have the feedback you've given me so far. I'm trying to get everybody, everybody's sort of approval before October just so I have all the feedback for that planning commission. But after they're done, say, January, then I'll also send out another document through them to you guys that has any changes that were made throughout. So for example, everything that, that you see on your document there, I've already got a document I'm compiling and those things are in it. And I also added that same text to the, where the, earlier in the document where it's the sort of background for the whole thing. And you see all the municipal systems with the same numbers that are in your section. I added it there too. So anywhere those, those numbers show, I've added that same text.
Anything else?
Your presentation is very well done.
Yeah, we really do appreciate it. Thank you very much for explaining.
Living this information for three years now. And yet it's still complicated because there's nine, just nine municipalities.
Nine municipalities that you're dealing with.
They each have water and wastewater, so 18 systems.
It's like herding ants.
All right, so just unplug this here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is ordinance 267, which was?
Um, ordinance 267 was introduced at the council meeting on the 12th. And they sent it to us for recommendation as far as the definition for agriculture. That's all we are reviewing because that's in chapter 250 of zoning. And they are removing, I don't know how in front of me, the fowl and the animal or poultry husbandry. Considering that not agricultural anymore, just removing that, we're, they're inputting another section as far as the animals and the fowl.
Okay.
So if we are okay with that, and we just make a recommendation back to the council that we approve that, we're good with that, and then I will put it in our 250.
Well, I guess I should ask, is there anybody in the audience that is here to talk about this change in the definition? Okay, any comment from the board members?
If I could just clarify, I, I know this is referenced in numerous sections. You have to go around, right? It's not all in one spot. Talk about fines, I guess my first question is I'm curious. When we talk about there being a fine, if there's any violation, what is that fine?
Okay, there's no fine, this, this is just the definitions. This is in chapter 250 at the end of the zoning code. It's definitions of everything. This refers to principal uses in each of the zoning areas. So every zoning district has a principal use of agricultural. But you have to look at the definition to see what you can do for agricultural.
Dale, the, I, I see what you're talking about. In the actual ordinance, there is a discussion about a fine. But that is not under our purview.
Okay, I was, I was curious.
Yeah, because we, all, all we can do is because, because the definition of agriculture is within the zoning code.
Okay.
That's all we can comment on. Yeah, I mean, that's just a general question, yeah. Because it does say at the top of page two there, it says violation of this section shall some, shall be subject to such fine as provided in 147-12.
Which is property maintenance.
Yeah.
So maybe I'm looking at things I don't need to look at. But my eye is drawn to in the, in the preamble. We make a point of saying fowls, chickens, ducks, poultry engagement, because we define them all out. Then we get down to 147-7 and we only say foul. I don't know that makes a difference. I don't know how this is referred to in other sections. I don't know if we need to say here and after referred to collectively as foul. But again, up in the preamble, we list several items. But down in 147-7, we only say foul. I don't know if that matters, didn't mind observe that.
Let me explain a little bit. Their portion of this, which is not our territory, is an entire section. And there's more sections than we're seeing right here. So if they're modifying 147-7 to add this wordage, it still already has animals in it. It, there's another line that'll say, and the keeping of animals and blah, 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 and how many you can have, dogs, cats, et cetera. So it's very misleading because it's only showing you one section of that entire chapter.
I guess I see, I mean, I see Dale's point. It, it, it doesn't list foul and then say foul includes chickens, ducks, and whatnot. The preamble does say keeping or maintenance of fowl, chickens, ducks, and poultry. And then when you go to the definition.
Just says foul.
Well, the definition actually lists everything, but.
Right. Okay, and maybe I don't need to be concerned.
Yeah, you shouldn't be. That's actually, that's actually a council, that's a council issue. It's just the definition in the zoning code. And we're looking to make a change to that. So, and it, it listed as saying, keeping or maintenance of fowl, chickens, ducks, or poultry is being prohibited. They're not part of an agricultural or agricultural purposes definition. And that's all we're here to look at. Council makes the ordinances. It's just the definition that is in the zoning code. Because they're making a change to it, we have to approve that change.
Okay, I'm good. His observations, because I'm.
No, and, and it's appreciated that, you know, we're looking at these things. But our, our role is limited to that.
I just hope they are.
Well, is there a motion?
If I am cleaning out, cleaning ducks on my property, is that the engagement of, in poultry husbandry?
Poultry husbandry is a raising of them, I believe.
Yes.
All the way through death and.
If you're cleaning a duck on your property, you're not raising it.
No, if I shoot it, bring it home, clean it up, rip the feathers out of it, it might.
As long as it's not alive.
Okay.
Yep. I have a motion from the board.
And this will be a motion to recommend?
Yeah, approval of the change in definition for agricultural, agricultural purposes to exclude the items listed. Anyone? Dale?
I guess I'm fine with that. Chris has me thinking, got me thinking in a different direction.
Just the item listed under 250-125.
Just one paragraph is all we're.
That's all we're looking at, that's correct.
Why did he send this to us?
Because we have to change, there has to be a change in the zoning code. The definition needs a change in the zoning code.
In our zoning chapter. And we are the only ones who can recommend a change in that chapter, 250.
Because we're not recommending the ordinance. We're only making a discussion of the change in definition. Ordinance has to go before the normal council procedure with public input.
Who suggested this change that we're looking at approving?
The council.
The council.
They, they themselves, because I don't.
Yes.
Yes, it was, it come down from them, yes.
And I'll make a motion that we approve the revised definition of agricultural, agricultural purposes.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the definition. Repeat, just the definition of agricultural or agricultural purposes in section 250-125. Do I have a second of that motion?
Silence makes me wonder what everybody else's concerns are, or thinking.
Well, I can't, so it's either got to be Chris or Larry. Gentlemen, if not, let me know.
What's the motion again?
To approve the change in the definition.
Recommend an approval of the definition of agricultural to exclude the items listed.
That's it. Doesn't approve or support the ordinance, just the change in the definition in the zoning code.
Do we know if the council?
Would you strike recommend from your, and just say, we approve it?
Yeah.
Okay.
You have an amendment to the.
So now your motion is?
To approve.
Okay.
The revised definition of agricultural, agricultural purposes in section 250-125.
Okay, I'll second. Okay, we have an approval and a second. Any other discussion? We got, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, I see we have some individuals out in the audience. Mr. Gary, how are you this evening?
Very fine. How are you all doing?
I'm well, and Mr. Gary, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you.
Gary, you have any comments or issues you need to bring before the board?
No, we haven't been here long.
I know, I was beginning to wonder about you, but I saw, I saw, I saw a guy out mowing grass, so I knew that everything was still good. But we always appreciate you coming here to keep us honest. There's a gentleman in the back, any comments or?
Mr. Randerson.
That's fine, that's fine. Glad you attended. Okay, being that there's no other business, I'll take a recommendation to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a recommendation to adjourn the meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Good night, everybody.